Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your attendance here at today's City Commission meeting, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. We will start with roll call. Commissioner of District One?
Hunter Knoxon, District One.
Keith Love, District Two.
I'm a Blue Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Chris Sharp, District Three.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, thank you so very much. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum, a full commission established, and we will begin with the invocation. We are so very happy to have with us today for the invocation Pastor Terry Melinkan of the Come and See Friends Church. It's Pastor Terry, there he is. Pastor Terry, thank you for being here with us. You can go ahead and take the podium, and after your invocation, we will have the pledges by Commissioner Sharp. Would you like to?
Sure.
Need us in the pledges?
O most gracious and heavenly Father, how we thank you for allowing us to see this day, for watching over us and keeping us in all that we did today. It is only by your grace that we were able to do it and accomplish those things that were set before us. And so I'm asking you in the name of Jesus Christ that you would give this council and the mayor the wisdom needed, the understanding to govern this city, Lord God, and to keep this city, Lord God, in a perfect peace. I thank you for the, for watching over our families and keeping them safe, and we give you the glory and the honor and the praises and all of it. Jesus is my the name, I pray, amen.
Amen. American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
I am a Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Pastor Melinkan, if you have any announcements you'd like to share with the citizens of Texas City regarding Come and See Ministries, you can do so at this time.
I normally just allow you guys to conduct city business, but I just wanted to say our church is a growing church. We are out there in the neighborhoods, and we're trying to do exactly what Jesus has called us to do, and that is to find the loss, to seek the loss, and to save those that are willing to be saved, and we're trying to meet those needs of those individually. And what we're doing, it was, we're doing this spiritually and mentally and physically, and so that's what we do in the community.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right. We're at this point of our agenda, we're at proclamations and presentations, and I do have a proclamation that I wanted to begin with because, well, it's not a proclamation, actually, it's a certificate of recognition, but we have that for Higher Up Texas, Inc. And do we have a representative here from Higher Up Texas, Inc.? All right, thank you very much. If y'all want to come stand alongside this wall here, and we'll have you come up after we read this certificate of recognition. The certificate reads as follows. The City of Texas City, Texas, on behalf of the citizens and the City Commission, does hereby present Higher Up Texas, Inc. In commemoration of your exceptional commitment to preparing the youth of Texas City for a success, a successful future, since two thousand and twenty-three, Higher Up Texas has played a vital role in Texas City Independent School District by guiding high school seniors at Texas City High School and Lamarck High School through a life skills curriculum offered twice a week during their senior year. Your dedication to fostering growth, independence, and lifelong learning is an invaluable asset to our community, and testimony whereof witnessed my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on this twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four, signed by myself, Dedrick Johnson, Mayor, and attested as Mari Lee, our City Secretary. Want to have all of you come on up here for a quick photo, if y'all don't mind, and then we will give you an opportunity to let the citizens know what Higher Up, who Higher Up is and what you all are working on. Thank you very much. Still, come on, let's squeeze in tight. Good to see you. How you doing, aren't you? Good, thank y'all very much. Double up a little bit. Put some in the front, some in, some in the front, I'll stand in the back, how about that?
Are we squished in that?
Windows. Thank you very much. And if any one of you wants to have a few words to answer.
Hearing this recognition gives me so much emotion about what Higher Up Texas has accomplished. We're a nonprofit that began in two thousand and nineteen at Dickinson High School. We teach teens how to adult, and then we continue with them after high school to propel them into professional careers where they have upward mobility and can break cycles of poverty just by having the resources to accomplish their big goals in their careers. We began at Lamarck and Texas City High Schools in two thousand and twenty-three, and those are some really tremendous students we're working with, and we hope to keep, continue growing. Since we began in two thousand and nineteen, six hundred and fifty young adults in Galveston County have a foundation for life. That's pretty exciting. They can shake hands, they write thank you notes, they can pass an interview, they can do things that are really important for having success when you get your foot in the door for any career. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and I hope to see you all soon.
Take a second. Second, introduce your-
Yes, I'd love to. So our group, this is, this is some of our staff and our students, so I'd like each of them to come up, say who they are, how long they've been a member of HUT, and if they want to say anything else. They love being put on the spot to speak all the time. I do it all the time, so nothing about this is a surprise, so. And this is the birthday girl, by the way, twenty-one years old today.
Good evening. My name is Yara Flores, and I am the Career Development Specialist. I have been with Higher Up for coming up on one year, and we work together in Phase Two, working with one-on-ones to help them with job searches, college careers, and anything that life throws at you, we're up for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name's Juliana Rivera, and I've been with HUT since two thousand and twenty-two, I believe, and they've been such a blessing to me, like, they're so helpful.
Hello, I am Allison Hines. I was in the pilot program back in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and I graduated that year.
Hi, my name is Angel Hatton, and I've been with Higher Up Texas for a year now, and Higher Up Texas has definitely helped me through my darkest times. Like, I probably wouldn't even be here if it wasn't for them, and they've been such a blessing, and I love them so much.
Hi, my name's Marissa Lopez, and I recently graduated two thousand and twenty-four, and I've been with Higher Up Texas for a year, and Higher Up Texas has helped me in so many ways, such as getting a job where I want to be, grow as a physician assistant, which is UTMB, and hopefully they'll help me with the rest of my career.
Hi, I'm Kim Williamson. I'm the Program Director for HUT Phase Two. Like Ms. Yara said, we basically, after they graduate, they get to decide to stay in Phase Two, and that's where we help them with individualized support. Anything that life throws their way, we want to help them navigate and transition into adulthood, so thank you for having us.
My name's Amy Walker, so I am the Program Facilitator for TCISD at, for Higher Up Texas. So what that means is that I actually work with the high school seniors, both at Texas City and Lamarck High School. So two days a week, I bring guest speakers from the community in to teach these life skills. So if you are a HR, for example, we have the HR Director at Shriners Hospital come in and talk about what she looks for in an applicant, and how to build your resume, and things like that. So I facilitate that and build relationship with the students as they're coming to graduate here in May, so.
And one last thing, it looks like we're just a girls' program. I promise you, there's guys in our program too, but many of them are working in the evenings. But our program, what's special about bringing them with us is that they're contributing back to Higher Up Texas. When they're speaking at the microphone and really pushed out of their comfort zone, they're not only being taught how to publicly speak, but they're representing Higher Up Texas. You may forget what I say or Amy says, but you'll remember what they say, because the program has directly impacted them. Thank you again, have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you very much, once again. At this point, we are up to service awards. We have a few service awards at least to acknowledge and to give for those who may be present. Carol Hill De Santos of the Library has just made ten years, so we're thankful for Carol. Sangala Montgomery of the Police Department, ten years, thankful to Ms. Montgomery as well. Arthur Withers, Public Works, has been here fifteen years. And Mr. Calvin Bremer of the Wastewater Treatment Plant, has been here twenty years. Mr. Bremer here? All right, well, we thank all of those. We thank all of those individuals for their service to the City of Texas City. We're now up to reports. We have several reports for us this evening, Commissioners. First, we will have Ms. Cynthia Rushing to give us our financial quarterly report.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So this is a time that we present, or Finance presents to you the quarterly report for investments. And so I just want to highlight the fact that our investment policy is governed, mandated by the State Government Code, Chapter twenty-two fifty-six, for public fund investments. The mandate basically addresses the type of investments we should invest in, which is fixed income. It also addresses the investment objectives, where it is important for us to protect the principal and have liquidity, meaning quick access to the cash, and then return on investment, which is our yield. The mandate also requires that we have an investment policy, which we do, and we have to annually review that. And then we are also required to provide quarterly reporting on our investment position. So for this quarter, ending in September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, which happens, it happens to be the fiscal year-end, we began with the investment of a hundred and tw- a hundred and twelve million dollars, and we actually matured securities of twenty-eight million. And so you see that as an in and out, where we transferred it out because it matured, but then we placed it in a different asset class. We also had a change in our fair market value from the previous quarter of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, leaving us with an ending balance of our investment at market value at a hundred and twelve million, six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. During this quarter, we earned a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in interest, leaving us with an ending balance of a hundred and twelve million dollars and eight hundred and, well, a hundred and twelve, eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So a little bit more about our investments. This is showing our portfolio by institutions. We have our investments in three institutions, Hilltop Securities, Osaic Institution, and Texas First Bank. So these are the amounts. We have approximately thirty-seven million with Hilltop, and it's, it's in two asset classes, of fixed income securities and then cash money market. In Osaic, similar mix, where we have fixed income securities of thirty-seven million and thirty-four million in market, money market. And then in Texas First, we have a money market of almost three million dollars. Again, with a total balance of our portfolio of a hundred and twelve million dollars. Now, this is just showing us our investment composition. So in bank deposits, which is really, is the same as money market, we have forty-two point five million, and treasury securities, we have twenty-two point eight million, mutual funds, we have fifteen million, and then in bonds, we have thirty-two point four million, again, leaving our total investments at a hundred and twelve point eight million dollars. And the graph here, the pie graph, is just showing the, the percentage of our asset class. So our largest asset class is in the money market, which is thirty-eight percent, where we have twenty-nine percent in bonds, we have thirteen percent in mutual funds, and then the remaining twenty percent is in securities. All right, I may need some assistance, because I can't get there. Okay, yes. And so this is just showing our portfolio composition compared to the policy. In our policy, it provides guidance on what percentage of our portfolio consists of the various types. So in the graph here, you, you see the bar graph of blue, that's the, what the policy has. So in the policy, it's stating that we can have a hundred percent in bank deposits, treasury securities, and bonds. And the, the yellow bar is representing how much we have in, in this particular asset class. So you can clearly say, see that we are within, or in compliance with the investment policy. So this concludes the investment, quarterly investment report. Any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Ms. Rushing?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we also have another report from our Emergency Management Department. We'll hear from our emergency manager, Mr. Joel Tumbleson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. All right, so the Emergency Management's primary responsibility is to ensure the safety and security of the public. This includes any industrial or hazardous material incidents, any severe weather-related incidents, anything having to do with homeland security, or basically any threat to the public. What we try to do is organize a multi-agency response using the Incident Command System. Some of the stakeholders we deal with throughout the year, obviously citizens are our largest stakeholder. We also try to foster that public-private relationship between businesses and industry in the City of Texas City, and we also work closely with multiple counties, state, and federal organizations. We work closely with IMAS, utility companies, weather service, schools, hospitals, news media, quite a few agencies, and then also nonprofit agencies or non-governmental organizations. These agencies are often very important during a disaster, but most, most important immediately following a disaster, so we try to maintain a good relationship with those nonprofit organizations. So some, we opened our Emergency Operations Center multiple times throughout the year, but I wanted to highlight some of the significant events that happened since I last addressed the commission last November. So on December seventeenth, Marathon had an emissions event where they released some sulfur dioxide that escaped their facility, which caused us to have to close the south loop and issue a shelter-in-place order for some facilities just southeast of Marathon. There was no injuries or exposures during that event. And then on December twenty-sixth, we were notified of an oil spill, a saltine oil spill. We believe that oil spill started a couple days prior to the twenty-sixth, but we were notified about it on the twenty-sixth. This picture here is a culprit, the tank that overflowed the oil. This tank is located on Century Boulevard, north end of Century, kind of tucked back in the woods, and the oil escaped from this tank and entered the storm drain right there on Century Boulevard and traveled three-quarters of a mile south where it entered Moses Bayou or Drainage Ditch Number Six, and then it traveled two miles east, and then that's when we were notified about it, and we were able to put some boom down and stop the oil just prior to it entering Moses Lake. This is a picture of one of the containment sites, this two-mile stretch of Ditch Six. At one time, we had over a hundred people working in that ditch trying to pick up oil. In a total, they collected over forty-two thousand gallons of oil from that spill. This is a picture of our Emergency Operations Center during that event. I call it the War Room. You see a lot of different agencies and stakeholders represented here. We operated under the Unified Command System, and this is where we developed our goals, objectives, strategies, and tactics, and had daily meetings. So there's a lot of agencies involved in that oil spill. You can see some of them here on the, on the screen. Believe this, this, this oil spill, we ended on August thirteenth of this year, so it was a long, drawn-out call to bring it to fruition. And then nobody was hurt, no exposures or injuries on that incident either. And then some other significant events, we opened our Emergency Operations Center for during the year, notably the Del Sol Apartment Fire. Y'all probably remember on February twenty-first, Texas City Police Department, Texas City Fire Department made an amazing rescue of three little kids from a balcony, just before their apartment was engulfed in fire, and that was recorded on video from a bystander, and that video kind of went viral, so it was a great job by our first responders. We had a pretty significant flash flooding event on July twenty-sixth that we received over five inches of rain in a short period of time. We ended up having to delay the opening of some city facilities. And then, of course, Hurricane Barrel. Hurricane Barrel was one of the largest recorded hurricanes on record in July. It was a category-five hurricane, but fortunately it downgraded before it made landfall at four AM on July eighth, and it made landfall right around Mata Gorda. And here in Texas City, we received sixty-four mile-an-hour sustained winds. But one interesting fact about this is the death toll in the Houston area from Hurricane Barrel stands at forty-two people, and these deaths weren't directly related to the hurricane, however, they were related to the damage to infrastructure from the hurricane, mainly the loss of power. So here in Texas City, when we realized we were going to have an extended loss of power, we got a list of a hundred and fifteen people in Texas City that identified as medically fragile, and with the help of the Fire Department, we were able to make contact with all of those people and make sure they didn't have any unmet needs. So currently, we're working with FEMA to identify all our costs and damages from Hurricane Barrel. This number here has changed. The number stands today at about three point six million dollars, and our goal here is working with FEMA Public Assistance Program and some other Texas, State of Texas programs. Our goal is to recover a majority amount of this money. So this project will probably continue on for the next year or two as we work through this process. And what we do, we're not responding to emergencies, is we attend a lot of training, a lot of meetings, a lot of drills. We're currently updating our hazard mitigation plan for the city, reviewing and renewing our debris monitoring contracts, constantly working with the county on evacuation planning and, and our Hurricane Town Hall. Real quick, our Hurricane Town Hall, due to all the city departments who had a big hand in this, was a huge success this last year. And the reason this Hurricane Town Hall is important is not only does it prepare our citizens for hurricane season, but really any severe weather event, and it also builds social capital. And there's been a lot of studies that show definitively, communities with a high social capital are more resilient and tend to recover a lot quicker from disasters than communities without that social capital. So this is another event that helps build that social capital. And again, thanks to all the city departments who made this happen, but we had five hundred and eighty people attend Hurricane Town Hall, and that's my presentation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tumbleson, you have any, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
On the Sawtooth spill-
Yes, ma'am.
With so many different stakeholders, who actually pays for the renovation and-
Sawtooth was the responsible party, so they're on the hook for all that money. But because it was a small company and such a big response, just the contractor alone was billing them three, four million dollars, so EPA comes in and they, they guarantee payment, so whatever Sawtooth can't pay, the EPA will pay and try to recover on the back end from Sawtooth. So ultimately, it all falls on the responsible party to pay for all of that.
And so my second question is, with that, do they not have a monitoring program to make sure they don't have leaky tanks?
They, they should, and this was, this was a smaller company, an independent driller, and they're regulated by the Texas Railroad Commission. And so once they get that permit from the Railroad Commission, it's up to the Railroad Commission to make sure they have everything in place. I don't know if the Railroad Commission forces them to monitor something twenty-four-seven, but they, they claim that they had somebody out there every day. They have somebody out there every day checking, and we don't believe that somebody was out there for three or four days. It was too much oil that traveled too far. So the EPA opened up a criminal investigation, and the Railroad Commission and all those, excuse me, all those state and federal agencies are overseeing that, that end of it. And that tank, by the way, is no longer there, and Sawtooth is no longer in business also, so that's a lot of mess on the back end. Yes, ma'am.
Joe, real quick, before you take your seat, can you, you mentioned the term "social capital," it's something that you kind of explained to me a while back during the Town Hall meeting. Can you just speak briefly as, as what that is?
Yeah, so they, they've done studies, the federal government and other state agencies and higher institutions have done studies that, that show when a community is a closer-knit community, and they come together and they do functions together, whether it's a Hurricane Town Hall, or a snow day, or a music festival. When you have a tight-knit community, they tend to rely on each other and help each other and check on each other, and those have just been proven to be way more resilient, and they can recover ten times faster from any emergency or disaster than communities that are a lot more separated.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Good job, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, thank you. And we will now hear from Public Works, Mr. Jack Harrelson, relative on a report on Utilities Department Letter to Residents Concerning Water Service Lines.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I'll just be quick, but I thought this was important. I, I left everybody a copy of the letter. It should be front and back. This was, and we mailed out over twelve thousand of these letters to our residents on Friday, and I thought, just because of the wording of the letter, I thought it was important that I come kind of explain some things. This was an EPA-required letter. They require in all the municipalities to send these out for, just to make sure that we're checking, making sure our residents, our water service lines are lead-free. We have no problem with that, but the wording of it, I think, is, can be a little alarming to some of our residents. I highlighted a couple sentences, Mayor. You know, the first one says, "The city has been unable to determine the material of your water service line." That's really not that accurate, and once again, this is a letter that the EPA required us to send out. The city has never been responsible for the service line on the customer's side of the meter. So not that we have been unable to do it, we've never kept records of that, because it's not our responsibility to maintain. So that is a little misleading, and then the second part of that sentence is the potential, there is a potential your water service line is made of lead or galvanized. Only if we have, we have no record of witnessing, putting our eyes on your service line, that could be true, yes, and, but a lot of people have galvanized lines, and I want to clear that up real quick. If you have a galvanized line, that's not the same thing as a lead line. Galvanized has been found, though, if you have a lead line feeding into, so upstream of you, galvanized can absorb some of that harmful lead and then pass it on. But I want to make sure that none of our citizens panic, and, and you guys talk to the citizens as much as we do. We are confident that we don't have any, any lead lines, and, and I wrote a couple things down just to make sure to, to prove my confidence, is, you know, we spend over a million dollars annually replacing water mains, and most of those projects include a lot of service lines. Now, those service lines are just from our main to the city side of the meter, but it's the service lines nonetheless. We have never encountered in the over twenty years, in fact, on tonight's commission, it's phase twenty-two of that program, we have never encountered any lead piping. We've talked to our longest-serving employees, they've never encountered any lead piping. We've talked to local plumbers that work in the city, they've never seen any lead piping in the city. And, and on top of that, Mayor, we, we take water samples from inside homes. We've been doing that for thirty years, and it's, it's called a lead and copper test, but we used to have to take sixty samples a year, and we take them, and Corbin, correct me if I'm wrong, but the lead is more prevalent if water is- the lead is more prevalent if water is sitting and not being run. So we check it first thing in the morning to make sure that we have eight hours of non-use of the water. We check it from our oldest homes. And we've never came up with any. We used to take sixty samples a year, had come up with clean samples for so many years. Now we're only required to take thirty samples every three years. So we're, we're really confident that we don't have any issues. And this letter, although we want to give our, our citizens and make sure that they're confident that, you know, we don't have any, we're not sending them bad water, and I, I really, uh, I take a little offense to that because I know how hard our water department works and how much testing and how, how much work they put into that to make sure that we, our citizens have safe drinking water. Um, it's a little frustrating when we're forced to send this out. And it's an unfunded mandate on top of that. So it's not like Corbin's guys have nothing to do. Um, so we're going to go out, on the back page, Mayor, I highlight another section about how we're going to verify the piping. And, uh, there's two ways. We're, we're going to either go at the meter box and, and just pull that up, and we can look, maybe we can see both the piping on both the city side and the, the, uh, customer side. Or we can actually verify with the line where it comes up out of ground before it goes into someone's house. But we're going to start doing that, but it's going to take us a little while. So every year, we'll have to send these letters out to those that have not been verified. Most of them, you can, in fact, if you go on our city website, Mayor, because we were required to do this as well, but we have a link that you can go to to pull up a map, and it's got all of the residential meters. And you click on that meter, or you can find your house, and you click on it, and it'll give a drawing just like what's shown right there, where it says, water main, city side, then it says, it has the meter on the other side, and that's the private side. So private and public. Most of the letters are going out to residents. And if you, so you don't know, hey, where's the problem at, or where's the unverified pipe? Most of them are going to be on the private side because we've never had to keep record of that before. So we'll be doing that, and it's going to be an ongoing project. Hopefully, it won't take us, uh, too long, but we've got twelve-thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-four to verify. And it's really, it's any house that was built prior to nineteen-eighty-eight. There, there's going to be some homes that get the letter even though they have a new house, but they're building on a lot that it used to have an old house and they tore it down. You know, our utility department doesn't get, we don't know when that happens because we just provide service to that meter box. So, but there's going to be homes that were built, you know, could be last year, that's still got this letter. But I just, I wanted our citizens to know, we take a lot of pride in what we're doing, and we're providing safe drinking water. We have zero indications that we have any lead service lines in the city, but we're crossing the Ts and dotting Is.
Right. Thank you.
So hypothetically, if there is a problem on the private side, is the homeowner responsible for expenditures to remedy the situation?
Uh, there, yes. The city is not going to fund, because this is the confusing part of it, Commissioner, is that we're only checking and verifying a little piece of the line. Um, all the piping inside the home. And that's where we think that the testing we've been doing for over thirty years is so much more accurate because we're testing it inside the home. Go ahead, Corbin.
One of the things that, that we're required to do, will be required to do, if we find us a line that is in need of replacement, we have to send them a letter on. Not necessarily get them a price, but send them to someone, hey, this plumbing company can do it, this contractor can do it. Just help them find someone that can replace it. But we bear no financial responsibility.
And, and once again, I don't think, um, that we're going to find anything. We have, we've been given no indications that we have any, any lead lines. You know, like I said, I don't even know what one looks like. It's, I, I have no idea.
Any more questions, Commissioners?
Okay.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate that. Clarification, I'm pretty sure most of us may have some residents who may have some questions once they get this in the mail. And so, uh, we just want us to be as educated as possible on it. Jack stands, and Corbin stands, uh, ready and willing to answer any other questions beyond today, uh, should you have any. Uh, at this time, it's now time, uh, for the public hearing. And the public hearing to, uh, on the adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance number thirteen thirteen, which amended ordinance number zero-four-forty-two, to nominate Union Carbide Corporation to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. We're going to hear from Ms. Kristen Edwards, our Director of Economic Development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, as always, for allowing me to speak with you tonight, uh, discussing ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-eight. As the mayor said, amending the city's existing ordinances pertaining to Texas enterprise zones and nominating a specific Union Carbide Corporation project as an enterprise project with the state. So the city of Texas City was approached by a third-party consultant hired by Union Carbide Corporation, i.e. Dow Chemical, to pursue a Texas Enterprise Zone designation for a thirty-seven-million-dollar project. The exciting thing about this job is that not only does it create ten new jobs, but it also assists in the retention of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine employees. So it's, it's a big deal. Uh, for reference, the Texas Enterprise Zone is a state sales and use tax refund program designated to encourage private investment and job creation in economically distressed areas of the state. The city's role is to provide an updated list of available incentives in the community, which Dow can reflect on their state-level application, and to nominate the project for enterprise status. The city has not committed to, nor is it expected to, provide any of the incentives listed to Dow. What we are asking is for the commission's approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-eight, which updates our original ordinance allowing for Texas enterprise zones, and that was two-thousand-four dash forty-two, as well as ordinance twenty-thirteen dash thirteen that amended that initial ordinance with a shorter set of investments that has since been updated for this ordinance. The changes outlined in ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-eight expand the list of available incentives in Texas City and recognizes that Union Carbide meets the criteria for tax relief and other incentives on the grounds that it will be located in a qualified business site, will create a higher level of employment, and create economic activity and stability. With your approval, Union Carbide Corporation will move forward with their application to the state of Texas for an enterprise zone designation.
Very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Edwards regarding this agenda item or this, of this part of the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone, uh, present in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of, or being in favor of this uh, enterprise zone for Union Carbide Corporation? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to Union Carbide Corporation joining this enterprise zone? Mr. Gomez, you can make your way to the podium and state your comments.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to stand and extend my remarks. Um, Union Carbide building has been there, what, eighty years? Seventy years around there? It, it used to be a credit union, if I'm not mistaken. And, and, and the thing is, uh, they're going to, uh, take money from the, uh, Union Carbide's taxes and, and, uh, and, and the thing is, what portion or how much of those property taxes are going to, are going to go away? And they're not, they're not going to, uh, contribute the correct or the amount they're supposed to be paying the county. So that, that's going to reduce the, uh, property taxes to, to the city. And I thank the mayor.
Thank you, sir. Kristen, if you have any information regarding that comment, you can address that.
I would be happy to clarify. So the enterprise zone designation allows Dow Chemical, Union Carbide, to apply to the state for reimbursements for, uh, specific job positions and other assistance. It really has nothing to do with their tax payments to the city or the county.
And the enterprise zone, is it a, is it a physical location? Or is it just a designation relative to, uh, the ability to, uh, qualify for these?
Yes. So it, it is a designation allowing them to qualify, but it also is in its own location. We know that because the only other, uh, Texas enterprise zone that's been issued was to ISP Technologies, and that was related to ordinance two-double-o-four-forty-two. Um, so this ordinance does verify that they are two separate locations.
So the, the credit union that Mr. Gomez was speaking of is not in the region or in the location of this designated enterprise zone. That credit union is on Palmer Highway, I believe. Does anyone else have any comments relative to this enterprise zone? All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to close the public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. We're up to item seven A, where we will address the items from this public hearing, to consider and take action on ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-eight, amending the city's existing ordinances pertaining to the Texas enterprise zones and nominating a specific Union Carbide Corporation project as an enterprise project. This is what we just had the public hearing for. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve, uh, Union Carbide's, um, nomination in this specific enterprise zone. It's been seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we are up to our public comments. Uh, we have a couple of people who have requested to, to address the commission. First, we will hear from, uh, Mr. Brian Getches, uh, who wishes to speak on city affairs. I wanted to remind everybody, we have up to three minutes for your public comments. And, uh, these are comments in which the city can take no action.
Oh, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Brian Getches. I'm retired from the Texas City Police Department. As I'm sitting here, I, I thought, "Social capital", what, what a great concept. And I'd like to talk to you about that, and I'd like to challenge each one of the commissioners and the mayor to accept that social capitalism. And I am challenging each one of you to ask questions of what's going on in our city. I don't think it's accurately being given out to you. And I, I don't know how aggressive you can be, but I'm challenging you to ask more questions. The Margaritaville has been a hot topic. We don't know how much y'all have been involved with it. If you've been involved with it, the total decisions, it has not been given to the public. And we would like to ask you questions, but I don't think you've been involved with it. That, that's just one of the things. You were elected to serve your, your district, but really, all of us. And I'm challenging you to do that. When we first made some changes, and specifically for the police department, the nepotism law was changed, or the clause for the city. I would like you, each one, to ask, why was that changed? And who benefited from it? If you ask that question, I think you will be surprised as to why it was changed. I don't think there was anything wrong with it, at least in the police department where I stood. But ask who benefited from that. The arbitration hearing on Manuel Johnson, I was present, and none of the captains or the people that were appointed fit the criteria. And we were told now that if you didn't meet it, you would have seven years, seven years to attain the requirements. None of us have ever heard of that. I'm, I'm challenging each one of you, have you heard of that clause? We don't know where that came from, how it came up, but it was the central point of the litigation. And the lawyers are handling that, and I'm not a lawyer. But I've never heard of you had seven years to attain. If you appointed any one of the department heads, you give them seven years to attain a degree? I, we've never heard of that. Uh, and I'd like to go with, I think all the city employees should get some sort of pay raise. I drive around the city every now and then. I drove down to the Gene Nelson Building. For those who don't know, it's between Tenth Street and Twelfth Street on Texas Avenue. There is about twenty-eight-hundred feet of Community Thirty screening on the fence. Twenty-eight-hundred feet.
Thank you, Mr. Getches. It's your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have to address the commission. We have Mr. Henry Gomez, Public Information Block Grant and PD.
Thank you. Once again, to allow me to stand and extend my remarks. I'm looking at a letter that you signed, Mayor, on, uh, May the eighteenth, two thousand and four. Given the...
Can you repeat that date, that date one more time, please?
Uh, May the eighteenth, two thousand and four. You signed this letter and, and it's coming from the, uh, I filed the petition to Washington, and the, uh, US Department of Urban and, uh, Urban Department. Also, too, it identifies that you're going to give Logomar, uh, some community development block grant money. And also tell, it, it tells them you're going to give Logomar a grant, uh, somewhere about five million dollars. And, and I don't think Logomar needs the money because it's a tax-free investment zone. And, and, uh, I, I think when you spend that money somewhere else, and, and I thank the gentleman.
You mind, you mind me taking a look at that letter? Yeah, you can pass, you can pass it to Commissioner?
No, no, no.
Uh, or you can, okay. No problem. Thank you.
Were you mayor in two thousand and four?
I've been mayor since twenty-twenty. In two thousand and four, I was not the mayor. I'm not familiar with that letter, so. Nonetheless, thank you for your comments. At this time, I have no other request to address the commission. We are up to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have before you, on your consent agenda, items nine A through F. If you'd like any of these pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this time.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Right. A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve all items on the consent agenda. That's seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're up to the regular items. Regular item ten A, to consider and take action on the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-six, regarding recommended speed zones for FM six forty-six as recommended by Texas DOT based on the traffic and engineering study. Ms. Kim Golden, our engineer?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is the third and final reading of the ordinance that will set the speed limit on six forty-six at fifty miles per hour inside the city limits of Texas City. It is already fifty miles per hour on the League City side and fifty miles per hour on the unincorporated, unincorporated county side. Um, if you approve it tonight, the ordinance will be provided to Texas DOT, and they will post the signs.
Any questions, Commissioners, on this third and final reading?
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-four twenty-six.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve this ordinance from third and final reading, seconded by Commissioner Nixon. Any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now, we're up to item B, ten B, to consider and take action on the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-seven, amending the Texas City Code of Ordinance Title III, entitled Administration, Chapter thirty-seven, Adding Section Sixteen, Signatures and Seals, Electronic, Digital, and Facsimile. City Secretary, Ms. Marie Lee.
Good evening. This, um, second reading is the same as the first. This ordinance is being brought to you just so that we can kind of make the business of the city more efficient and cohesive, giving authorization for electronic signatures and stamps.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Motion to approve second reading.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve the second reading of this ordinance, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next few items are all of public works. We're gonna ask Mr. Jack to come on up here. Get comfortable at the podium. We have consider and take action on resolution twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-two. This is for the removal and replacement of three existing rooftop AC units, both at the Sanders Vincent Center and Carver Center, by Gawen Mechanical, Inc., through Choice Partners contract.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is a simple request. I say simple, it's three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, but it's replacing the existing original units on both of those centers. So we've got three existing on each center. In fact, they should have been replaced last year. We were able to, through, I think through an emergency or a budget amendment last year, we replaced one on each center. This is just taking care of the remaining six units.
What reading is this? No, just kidding.
They're the original ones?
They're the original ones. Now, and what we did, Commissioners, we wanted to make sure that we got a unit that, the ones that were on there, they had a lot of fancy controls and things that we don't need. So we were able to, through the manufacturer rep and our contractor, hey, we get what we need, and if something happens, we can get parts right away. So that's why we're moving from an AON unit to a carrier unit.
When should this work take place?
As soon as we get to PO, we'll get it scheduled. We want it, we've gotta have it up and running, or Nicole's gonna kill me if we don't have it done by the time it gets hot, so.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Motion has been made to approve this resolution by Commissioner Knoxon, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jack. Next, item D, to consider and take action on resolution number twenty twenty-four one sixty-three, authorizing the execution of an engineering agreement with Arc Engineer, LLC, for waterline replacement project phase twenty-two.
Yes, sir, this is similar to, I spoke about it when we're talking about the letter. This is just our annual phase waterline replacement project, and this is for the engineering. Arc Engineers have been, the same engineers have been working with us for over twenty years now.
Any questions?
I move to approve.
Second.
I just want to bring to your attention, item D and E are both for different phases of the project, same type of agreement with Arc Engineer.
Item E is the sanitary sewer, so that's our sewer line, but it's, yes, sir, it's the same phase projects. I don't know how we got one phase ahead on our sanitary work, but...
No problem.
I think Wayne will take it.
We have a motion and a second for item D, to approve resolution twenty twenty-four and one sixty-three. I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made those motions and second.
I made the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clark, seconded by Commissioner Bowie on item D.
And motion to approve item E.
And you want, well, the original motion has to include both, and she elected to do them single, so we're just to do D right now. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Love?
Oh, yeah, motion to approve item E.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Love to approve item E, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, item F, to consider and take action on resolution twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-five, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into a contract with Blaze Construction Services, LLC, for the Logomar twenty-four inch force main, phase two, and Logomar East sixteen inch force main, phase two, B.
It's, that's a long project name, Mayor, for a simple project. We've got two force mains. The twenty-four inch is the second phase. We're nearing completion of phase one right now, but the twenty-four inch line, it's for new development, we're calling it Logomar East. So it's split up into two names, twenty-four inch and sixteen inch, because the twenty-four inch force main is being funded through our impact fees, the sixteen inch, the developer is paying for himself. But this is just to spur development on a new housing development that's planning.
Thank you, Jack. Commissioners, any questions on this project?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I second it.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And finally, Mr. Harrelson, to consider and take action on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-six, to award the bid number twenty twenty-five four six six sheet pile replacement project at pump stations A and B.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. In fact, if you guys remember, we rejected all bids on the last commission meeting. We had to do that because this is a grant-funded project. We only got one bidder on the initial go-around. We were already in the process of out-for bid for what we've got before the commission right now, and thank goodness, it was the same contractor was the low responsible bidder. So this is a grant project. We're really excited. It shouldn't probably be noticed by any of our citizens. It's happening behind on the discharge side of our pump stations, but that, once again, another original construction. It's time to harden those areas and keep us ready for any kind of storm that comes through. So that's what this project is.
All right.
Well, I move to approve.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harrelson.
Just want to tell Mr. Harrelson, he's really staying on top of this stuff. This is good.
I agree.
Lots of...
Way to be proactive.
I like to hear myself talk too much. I don't like hearing...
Lots of simultaneous projects going on around the city as it relates to public works. At this time, we are going to move into executive session and closed session. We are going to convene in this executive session pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter five fifty-one, Texas Government Code, to discuss the following, five fifty-one point oh seven one, consultation with city attorney, point oh seven two, deliberating regarding deliberation regarding real property, and oh seven four, personnel matters. Executive session is going to say five fifty-nine, and we will be back in this general population after the executive session. Let the record reflect, seven eighteen. We will now call this meeting back to order, and as we reconvene, we had twelve A to consider and possible action deriving from the executive closed session. Is no action to be taken, so we'll move on to thirteen, Commissioners' comments. Start with Commissioner Knoxon.
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Love?
No comment.
Commissioner Bowie?
No comment.
No comment.
Commissioner Sharp?
I just want to wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You know, that's important. Thanksgiving is one of the best holidays because we come together as a family, there's no gifts, we just come together and help you enjoy your holiday.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Clark?
Well, y'all are lucky I can't talk, or I would, but happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right, thank you very much. I don't have anything else to add myself, other than I wanted to thank TT Smith, Director of Community Development, for the, I believe it was close to three thousand feet of fence wrapping that covered the eyesore of the Texas City Public Works Yard for those residents over there. That wrapping of community matters and greenery was purchased with grant funds that were a part of our Keep Texas City Beautiful campaign. They weren't a part of any type of Texas City taxpayer general fund money, so I want to thank her for that. Makes the area look a lot better. Is there anybody in the entire city staff organization who has any comments they'd like to add?
At the microphone, please. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You're the best.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As you know, we're going into our holiday season. I would like to invite you all out to the Mayor's Lighting of the City. That's November the thirtieth, here at City Hall, and then we will have our annual Texas City Christmas parade, that's Thursday, December the fifth. Thank you.
Tom, is the lighting?
Lighting is at five P.M. It starts at five P.M., and then we'll light the tree at five forty-five. Thank you.
Lots of good local entertainment. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
I forgot something I wanted to tell you, that you did a great job at the Rotary Veterans Day. That speech you gave was really good, and a lot of people on the Rotary were talking about it, and they were very happy with it.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. I appreciate you and the other Rotarians for that Veterans Day program. It's a great program. We also unveiled officially our Vietnam Memorial Wall that's placed next to the Rotary Pavilion on the walking trail, and so honoring our Texas City High School alumni who were also killed in Vietnam War. And so it also highlighted some artwork by a local artist, Mr. Roland Castaneda. And so it was a great program. Happy to be a part of it, and thankful to everyone who has served. If there is nothing else, we will...
Abolish to adjourn.
To adjourn. Thank you all for your patience.